We will call the Capitol City Council meeting Tuesday, April ninth at six fifty-eight P M. Do you guys have a chance to look at our previous minutes, our minutes from our previous meeting? Any corrections or additions to that that you guys can see? If not, we'll take a motion to approve. So move. Lauren, second?
I'll second.
Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda?
Uh, that lift station up here Jeff shots. And then also under building permits. We're talking about putting in a new, new flooring at the fire hall.
And then I just had, if we want to discuss the city cleanup date, I didn't know Bill wasn't gonna be here tonight, so maybe.
We don't do without.
Yeah, I better make sure everything's. Maybe we'll just bring it up so we discuss it, so we have it on old business next meeting and won't forget, and then, uh, discuss it next meeting. Alright, anything else for tonight's agenda? If not, we'll take a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Second, Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go right into our visitors, and Dwayne, what do you got for us?
I was wondering about getting water in the low here. What that would take.
You want water answered?
Yeah, yeah. And I was just thinking. Coming right off of Elm Street in that front corner of the front office right there. So it'd be right off the street. Ardell said there was a sewer and water in the street before, because of the blue house across the street, the old blue house?
Yeah.
That they tore it out, so there is but.
And that was, that sewer line, that blue house, I know it came out of the south and hit it on.
That's what Ardell said, yeah.
And then it must go west evidently, that part I don't.
It must, because your main trunk went in front of your house, doesn't it?
Yeah. Runs north and south.
Yeah. So I just checked in how big a deal that would be to do that.
I think. All I know is from the past, I know the sewer system always with the customers' expense out to the street, all the way to the main trunk line.
Okay.
The water. I think we took it up to the curb, or the city took it up to the curb stop, which usually is on the boulevard.
Right.
Where is that curb stop closest?
There isn't one there, is there?
Oh, there's not? No, there was no water there.
It wasn't?
Not to his place.
No, no, there's no water from the.
So our options are connect into or pull from Shelly's. Is that accurate?
Shelly's.
I don't know if we have enough drop to get over to Shelly's.
Is that right? I don't know.
Cause you're talking quite a distance there. I don't know if you'd have the right drop to. I don't know, I don't know how deep it would be at Shelly's at the end of it. Then, of course, if somebody buys Shelly's lot and does something, then that's the end of that.
See, that's the other problem, we have to cross it over.
You have to add it needs, but not only.
Shelly's property.
I just meant like there was a.
Yeah.
There's nothing there.
So is the water, is there water right in front there?
On Elm Street?
Yeah, there's water in sewer water up there, yeah.
Cause I don't know if you recall, there was that big blue house? That got tore down?
Okay.
And I know we.
Not that, right across from the office, basically.
Okay, yeah, well. Let's get it done, yes.
Are you willing to bear the expense out to the street?
Well, what are you, what are you talking for expense?
I don't know.
You have to get quote from D walls.
Yeah.
And we take care of the curb stop up to the, up to the.
To the main line.
Off the main line, yeah.
Main line to the curb stop, from the curb stop into the houses up to.
Well, we just only have curb stop though, so we'd have to get a curb stop and then.
Right.
And then you'd be bringing sewer to there anyway.
Yeah.
It's all over.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless I didn't do the sewer, the guy just ran water up there, then he'd have the same.
But really, Dwayne, if you got the trench open, we could probably cost share.
I was gonna say, if that, if you're doing the same trench, why don't we take care of some of the two?
Well, let's see what, let's, I suppose we gotta get some bids on, right?
Get all the D wall.
Cause then they'd have to be tearing the street and stuff too. It's too bad if they didn't do it before the street went in.
Well, Bill and I talked about it. You know what I think? We got a couple main valves to replace.
Yeah.
And. And that was strictly just talk, I guess.
I know, I know.
But as far as if we tear it up, we're gonna have to tear up pavement.
Oh, no, but I mean before the streets went in, I had asked about it. That's, but I didn't do an official like this, so.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Okay, well, let's, that's.
And maybe what we could do is, or what Bill and I talked about was that maybe if we're doing mains, we'd have enough where we could get like border states to come down with their small paving machine. And lay it in properly.
Well, let's check it out, it'd be nice to have water up at the low here, you know? I'd like to put a pole in that front corner.
Okay.
So I might have to tear out the floor in there and then put it in a box, so we'd have something to rub into, you know? And the sidewalks in the front, they can go by, but I got a concrete guy, concrete cowboys are coming out. They might do a new apron, and I might just do concrete across the whole front there.
Well, let's get a curb stop in there first.
Well, yeah, we have to, and yeah, about the concrete won't let until that's done.
Right.
But. Yeah, so then, if you know where the big door is, you know where the office door is, pretty much just right in the front there, right next to the big door on the left, that's where I'd run it. Then I'd just do a bathroom in the front.
Okay.
I think that makes more sense, cause instead of talking, running around anywhere else, I think next to the building, there's an old, there was an old scale there, you'd run into some concrete from hell, I think. They used to be, they used to be an old coal scale there, I guess, next to the building.
Yeah, there was a scale there, I remember that scale.
And I know there's still concrete sticking up in the gravel, so. So who knows, would you run into trying to dig next to the building, I think the only option is come in the front. So.
Sure, that's how they do all of them, they get the most direct probably to the building.
Well, the, the problem you got in this building is you don't have a heated basement or nothing, so a guy's gotta. You know, wherever you come in, he's gonna have to dig down and do a super insulated box crawl space with heat taping to make it.
I would say that, I don't know, those sewer line, well.
So I'm gonna, I would dig down, do a box, put four inches of foam, spray foam it. Insulate the hell out of it, so it never freezes over there, but the office is always heated anyhow, so. Guy could even put a vent in the floor down to that crawl space, that spot.
Cause there's not much, cause usually you.
There's about this much room under the joists.
Yeah.
But I was thinking I'd take the floor out in there and just, you know.
Just drop the culprit down, or, you know, one of those plastic.
Right, right, right. But I was just thinking while the guy's down, maybe you wanna super insulate like a four by four box or something. You know, around the sewer line and the water line.
Yeah.
Well, get some estimates.
Yeah, let's get some estimates, see what it would take.
Who's responsible for these estimates, getting, getting them done?
One of, cause, you know, if D walls are coming down anyway, just let Bill.
Right. Cause you're gonna get estimates on another shut off, right?
I think they've already given Bill.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
I know the curb stops or the valves are here.
So Bill could talk to them and get an estimate from them.
Cause I just asked them, as a matter of fact, I asked Lon Dwall today, don't you believe all better? If they're running into frost, and he said they haven't been.
I'm surprised they didn't put water in when they ran the new sewer and water back in the day, but who owned it then, do you think, the Crispies or Dean or?
Uh, the water, well, the sewer line being we didn't have to tear up Elm Street at all.
Oh.
So I guess that that's still cast out there too.
Oh, sure, sure.
But as far as I.
And the church and the, that blue house would have run into that, right?
The blue house or the church went straight to the.
Oh, it did, oh, okay.
It tied into that main front.
So they would have had to run a line over just for that blue house, or what was it, an old Coruspar back in the day, or some, what was that blue?
I think it was a stable at one time, and then it got converted to a house, or a house got moved in.
All right, well, if Bill can get an estimate from them, that'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, just stay in touch with him and.
Yeah, I will, yeah, yeah, but I'd need to run it over to Shelly's, that's a whole other issue. I just.
Oh, you know.
I mean, it was a great idea.
That's the option I heard, and, um.
Bill thought of that, and, but I, I mean, I, just like a couple things, you'd have to talk to Shelly.
Fortunately, our streets are like a, a new car, it's, it's gonna get a scratch on it. And then once, you know, so we gotta go in there and dig it up, we gotta, we gotta do.
Yeah.
You know?
I know.
Chip sealed it up, you won't even know it's there.
Yeah, sorry, thank you, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Dwayne.
Yeah, thank you.
That's what we, Bill and we talked, we thought, you know, if we do the mains, it is gonna hit a pretty good sized area.
Okay.
That maybe if border states we won't, they had a small paving machine, I don't know how big it is.
Sure.
But it's probably was a damn expensive.
Yeah. Little things, yeah.
Okay, uh, Tom, you got anything for us for city maintenance?
Uh, just, we, we put our last one of the new meters in, which made a hundred and one meters, and now we, we're out of them.
Okay, out of meters.
Out of meters, hundred and one.
How many more you gotta go?
About a hundred and twenty, I think.
Oh, you're halfway there, not quite.
Only gonna find money to buy.
Do you like, yeah, exactly, do you like these new meters?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Good.
Definitely the way to go.
Alright. Alright, nothing else, Bill didn't leave anything for anybody. Okay, auditor, what do you got for us tonight?
Um, all the election paperwork was put in, filed yesterday by four oh five or whatever. And there is a new thing that they did this year, you know how they always making you do more paperwork? Thirty-two days before the election, I have to go around and take a piece of paper to each person, alright, Grant, Grant put one in. Gotta bring this paper to Grant, ask him if he's got contributions, if he does, he has to report them. If there's zero contributions, he's gotta put zero and sign it, and I have to send them back.
That's interesting. Will we get contributions for that?
No.
No, I got underlined, seriously.
Actually, when I, when I went to the election the other day, we were wondering the election stuff, and I said, why do they do that for small towns? We're begging people to get on, and you think people are gonna give us contribution? Just one more piece of paper.
I will contribute if Lauren runs again, he's gonna be a write-in, I didn't say it. It's out there.
And that's all I have.
That's it for that, okay, so Lauren will accept right, it's got her. Grant, what do you got, water, sewer, and policing, anything?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Uh, street slating and library, Jeff?
Me, I contacted Steve Schultz with Otter Tail about that broken light down west of the ball field that, that.
By Mike Martins?
By Mark Martins. Okay, I've got that taken care of. Anybody else see any lights? I try to go through, you know, once a week, but I have many here for three.
That's the only one I saw.
Okay.
That, that went from that wind and ice storm.
Yeah, broke that thing right up.
It was pointing up in the air, did you see that?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so far, that's all I think so far.
Larry?
No.
Nothing? Lauren?
No.
Alright. Old business, election paperwork. That's, was due yesterday, um, Terry Griffiths property county. Uh, we'll go through that on new, uh, building permit for John Miller's shed, that was approved recently. New business, uh, Dwayne Nelson's here, talked about watering sewer barriers to his building. Uh, land for bids for Terry Griffiths old property.
I understand there was a, there was some problem with the paperwork, so I would actually make a motion, we just table the bids for this meeting.
Okay, till we figure that out till next meeting, so.
Yeah.
I'll just give that sealed bid back to you then, Cherry.
It's actually not sealed, they mailed it to me as a city auditor, so I opened it, I, but that's okay. He's, he, he is going to keep his bid until it's, he will still purchase it, it's a neighbor right next door.
So we'll take a second on that motion?
I'll make that second.
Table it till next meeting, so. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Chris Sinker notices of application for permit appropriation of water, so it's. I think that's just, uh.
Is that for irrigation?
It usually is, I didn't get a chance to read it yet, but. Yeah, two hundred and twenty gallons a minute, I would say that'd be.
Hey, where did this occur?
It's in Stutman County, but they still have to make us aware of it.
Oh, okay, so it must be.
Hmm. I wonder what, what piece of land they're putting there.
It has a section there, but I don't, I couldn't tell.
Oh, yeah.
Thirty-seven sixty-seven, section thirty-one, if I have that work map, I can tell me. So we just have to make everyone aware of that, we all need.
That's all you do is make it clear.
Okay, branches, lawn mowing, yard cleanup, um, I think that's what I had you put on, correct?
You did, yeah.
I was approached with some people that made good points to me, um. With spring coming and the grass turning green and gonna grow, we have not as many yards anymore, obviously with branches and everything laying them. And what they were afraid of is everything that the city has to mow, go in and mow for them. How do we want to fix that before we have another problem there, where we're going in with our mower blind with eight inches of grass and sticks and stuff laying in there?
Branches.
City stuff, we've cleaned up most of the city's stuff.
No, just like, cause you guys gotta go in once in a while and mow.
The linkwood users to mow these people's.
Before it gets too tall, and then we go in there with our mower and start wrecking shit, you know, is what was brought up to me, and I thought that was a great point, but I don't know how to.
I don't know how to fix that.
What is that?
Yeah, we put some sort of a surge charge on top of.
One, for instance, my neighbor, there's branches all over their yard, and that's one we cut.
That was brought up, to be honest with you, so, yeah. From someone.
Yeah, I don't know how to either, you know, we'd have to go out there and clean that stuff up, but if we do that, you know, then we're gonna have to do everybody else in town.
Well, that was one thing that was brought up, do we set a date for everyone? Saying it should be cleaned up by this time, or the city will.
Bill and I talked about that, about, you know, cause right now, I'm just, if you got two people on west side of town and one person on east side of town that are setting a pile out here and there. And I'm just running back and forth with the tractor, we have a dump truck, um, and, you know, it'd be a lot easier to just load that dump truck, take, you know, a truckload out to the dump and dump it. But we're not gonna do, you know, it takes a half hour to fire that dump truck up, it's got no heat, for one thing, um, we're not gonna do that for three piles, you know, two over there and one over there. So we thought about trying to set a date to get everyone in town to get their branch piles out, you know, a certain week or whatever, and, uh, that way we can go around with the truck and the tractor, pick them up.
Do it a long time?
Yeah.
Well, that could tie in with our city cleanup too, but I don't know what's gonna work for.
Well, there's enough junk out there with city cleanup without the branches, there's a lot of, a lot of people haven't even touched their branches.
So should we get something going here, guys, for just say branches this time, and the next meeting we'll make a date for the city cleanup?
That's what I wondered, cause a lot of, I know there's quite a few of my houses that aren't occupied, you know, they're.
They're hunter houses.
Hunter houses, I guess, well, yeah.
Have to.
I don't know, maybe I should get around and get that list, and then send them a letter. And put a date on it that they have to either clean it up themselves, come here to clean it up, or hire somebody to get in there and clean it up. There's a house south of the bowling alley. There's that one big house right north of George G, he's got a bunch.
Apartment's got a bunch, we're waiting for the ground to get solid enough to get a bog gad on and not tear the hell out of the grass.
Right, that's how short it is, people are waiting for the weather.
Well, you know, I just, you know, and just get the ground so we can get trucks and stuff out there to get them over there.
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll haul them out there.
When do you send out, sorry, I should know this, um, statements for water bill?
It will be, let's see, they, they drive around, probably like the twentieth, twentieth, twenty-fourth.
So that would give everyone a couple more, what is due tonight, a couple more weeks, send them out with them, we could have someone draw up a letter and. Can we send them out with that, or is that gonna not work?
We can send it out, cause I just won't use the twenty-two, I'll put them in an envelope and won't use the twenty-two stamps on those certain people, we're not sending them out to everybody, we're just going around getting yards and getting them done, right?
Can you guys get a list of, I don't wanna see.
Just the people that aren't in town, you mean? Everybody in town's got pretty much branches in their yard, the majority of people still haven't cleaned their yards out.
I, what do you, I was trying to, I don't know, I don't know what, who to send it to. Can't say the people that we mow with our lawn all the time, that's, I think hunters somehow gotta be, I, they had to know an ice storm came through, but maybe not, I don't know.
Well, you know, I, it, it's hard for me to talk about that, cause. In my personal opinion about this, and I've voiced this before, if I have a branch fall down in my yard, I'll take care of it myself, I'm not gonna put it out in the street. That's me, okay, I realize we offer that service, so that's just me. And so it's hard for me to, to, to even get in this conversation, because I, I don't look at it like you guys do, I guess.
I think we need to do something. How do I, so we don't want everyone to say, well, the hell with it, I'm gonna spend a hundred dollars to get my lawn mowed the first time.
That's true, well, yeah, that's true, well, some of that was.
Cause that's gonna cost, that's gonna be cheaper for them when we wreck our mower, to say the heck with it, what is it, a hundred bucks to come in and mow? Hundred fifty, it's still gonna be cheaper than having someone come in and drag it.
Can we, I'll just send out. Can we send out a notice that if there are branches in your yard for the first time that we come in mow, you will be assessed an additional charge for, you know, branch cleanup? In addition, a hundred and fifty charges that we do for that. Like, if it isn't handled by the time, you know, it's to the eight inch level, like, we're gonna have to come and clean that up for whatever we think is a fair rate to go in. Try and rake sticks up and branches up in eight inch grass.
There really aren't that many people that we have to go cut their grass, I mean, you know, you know, there's maybe.
Okay.
Maybe two or three, you know, that we have to.
Cause we get, yeah, cause we get a notice every year, basically, saying if your grass gets X high, there's a charge that comes with that. Just amend that to where this year, if we have to clean branches out of said grass, there will, you will be assessed an additional charge. So handle it or don't, but this is what's coming, and then we're not trying preemptively go on private property and start cleaning things up, just add it on. That's the frustration that we have to go.
Cause it's, how much is it for the first, it's per hour, isn't it?
It's a hundred fifty bucks if it takes twenty minutes or an hour.
And then after the first hour, there's an additional charge, isn't there? So in other words, if we're picking branches for the first hour, they, and then it takes an hour or twenty minutes to mow, they're charged two hours, then around three hundred, though.
And the ones we're doing, really big yards.
I just would like to get it nipped before it's too high and we don't see it.
Right, and like I said, there's only like two places that we have regularly.
Is there a lot of hunter?
I guess I don't really.
We don't do any hunter houses, they all get branches everywhere. Most hunter houses have people in town here that take care of their.
So we don't need to send out to all the, out of state or out of town?
I wouldn't think so, um. I, I, I mean, maybe it wouldn't hurt, cause, uh, you know, maybe some of the people in town that take care of these houses just figure, well, you know, uh, I'll talk to them about their branches when they come up or something, I don't know, you know.
Do you have phone numbers for a lot of these out of state, you do, don't you? So really, would it be that impossible for us?
Like some of them right now, I see Ray L's is going around, and he's bringing them all forward and up to the.
Right.
To the curb, there's a lot of them that, since it's getting nicer out, it looks like they're bringing them to the curb, but they're bigger than what they're supposed to be.
Well, we can kill two birds, but let's do a date on when we wanna do the city cleanup for branches, tonight, get that set? Are you suggesting call it, just call some numbers of some of them?
Cause a lot of the yards are fairly clean, actually, other than small stuff, you know, that takes raking.
Um, yeah, cause there's some, some that don't have anything in them, you know?
Yeah.
But there are a lot of them that do also have branches.
And I don't know what a deadline of May fifteenth, that'd be a little over a month.
And I'm just gonna keep my, please send them out the twentieth. I'm not sending them in with everybody, I guess, yeah, just put it in the paper and.
Yeah, we can do that, Facebook, the paper, make up some posters, we'll put them in the co-op, the bank, the bar.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
What is May fifteenth, is this? I know that falls on a Wednesday, May fifteenth.
Maybe do it on, go through the Sunday or something, that way gives people a weekend, a lot of people are gonna do that stuff on a weekend.
So by May twenty-first then, or seven hundred, Tuesday, I'm sorry, May twenty?
That'd probably be good.
Yeah.
Is a cleanup branch, I mean, is city, are we coming around with the network?
May twentieth? Your branch, that's just for the branch cleanup?
Yeah, that gives them a little bit more than a month to get it.
And as long as it's.
Get ahold of somebody if they have to get ahold of somebody up here to go do that for them or whatever.
Okay, uh, will someone let Bill know then, uh, to get posters made, please?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that tomorrow.
Facebook and, and the paper, I guess, what do we wanna do with, I just don't want someone coming mad with the bill for cleaning their yard up or something that didn't get the notice.
Well, before we even go into somebody's yard, we would. Well, we had to try and contact them, you know?
So let's just play May twentieth, then we'll contact whoever's still got a mess or. That should narrow our list down quite a bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I could take the call and just call, try calling my phone ahead of time, even before May twentieth.
I think we should call them and send a letter, cause that gives us our two weeks if we have to do something.
Yeah.
Legally, we gotta do that, correct, send a letter out first.
And maybe we should just drive around and find out the hunter houses that are affected by it.
Okay, perfect, thanks, Tom. Any other discussion on that, guys? Now we'll move on, okay, so May twentieth, you said? Uh, cutting curbs, curbs by Jerry Metz and fire department.
Yeah, what it is, Jerry Metz, you know, built that addition, that garage on. And he was wondering if it's all right to cut the curb, not the gutter, only the curb, cut that back off, so he can build a driveway up into his garage. As far as the fire hall. All that new tanker truck, when we pull out, or when they pull out, they already hit the door, cause they gotta start turning. And there's so much length behind the ax that it wants to swing in its, close call, that truck is over eight feet wide. And it's over width with the drop tanks. So Bill and I talked about if we could, on the north side of Cedar Street, there's that power pole, just cut that curb out. And that lot is higher, so it wouldn't, you could, we could just slope it up with gravel, cause it's gravel all the way to the curb. So that truck could pull out and then. And then, if there's no vehicles, he could pull through that lot and exit. Or when he wants to back in, he could at least run his front onto that gravel and then back straight.
Without having that curb there.
That makes sense. That makes it easier, backing every one of our trucks in and out of there too.
That curb's always been right there.
And the other thing is, from the city standpoint, we push snow onto that lot, you always gotta. Watch for that dang curb.
Did it a few times when I used to push the.
And really, it doesn't, there isn't gonna be a lot of water coming out. It shouldn't be a problem.
Fire anyway in there.
Yeah.
Jerry also wants to cut the curb on Lynn Goldrey's house too.
Last he told me, he thinks he's gonna cancel it.
Oh, okay, cause he came over while we were out there putting the beer in and.
That one tree.
Says he wants to make a parking area there. Alright.
So it's more or less just the council, he, Jerry asked me if the council would approve it. Him doing that.
Okay, doesn't sound like there's any trouble here, so, I don't think we need a motion for that, we, a lot of people have cut curves in person. Uh, city cleanup date, that we're just gonna put on. For old business for next month and just hold off till we can. See how this. Branch thing turns out. Okay, the town rummage sale this year, just to mention, so everyone knows, it's gonna be in June. There, we don't have an exact date yet, just in June is what I was told. So you guys are aware. Um, cottage would like permission to put up greenhouse on city lot next to them.
And then there's, she said she, right next to them, that the city owns that lot?
It's community development.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, cause already got a lease agreement with. Cabo College for leasing that lot. So, I really don't know if you need.
City's not even involved then?
City shouldn't be involved.
Okay.
Oh, she's not, she, when she called me, she said that, that she thought the city owned it.
Yeah. I think we misunderstood.
Okay, that's fine. But she does need to, does she need a permit to put that greenhouse up?
I don't think so, cause we never approved one for Patty that I remember.
Well, she's actually for a permit to, it'll, they're, they're putting up one that you put up and you take back down, it won't stand, oh, you're wrong.
I don't ever remember.
I don't know if, it's not, I think it's applicable to a permit, is it? It's not.
Well, I, I don't know what to say, not just about thing, no.
I've not.
But I can't think of. You know, it's not gonna be taxed, it's not.
She's taking increasing value with your house in any form, so.
Yeah.
I would say no.
I think it's a great idea, so.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I don't see why we wouldn't, there's no.
Yeah, cause Patty's not doing it this year, so there's no conflict of interest.
No, that's the thing, that's why they're open here.
No, she's not.
No.
She's getting older for health.
I heard a rumor that she sold that greenhouse to Cabo.
She sold that greenhouse to somebody that has, on a farm, that's all I know.
Okay.
Rumors.
I thought it was a roof. Another rumor I heard that it was a roof, but I'm not sure, but it's somebody on the farm that bought it.
Okay, uh, also approve a permit for Deb Zilmer for new kitchen cabinets and flooring. Anthony Schleck remodeling kitchen and the fire hall flooring also. Where'd you see her put that floor in, in the fire hall?
It's in the food pantry part.
Oh, okay, I was hoping that none of the new stuff was.
No, no, there's that, on the old fire hall, it's that tile and it's peeling and cracked and.
That old asbestos tile.
What's that?
That old asbestos tile.
Okay, we need a motion to approve those three permits then?
Salute.
Grant, second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Alright, oh, the lift station too, I just had a note.
Yeah, you should have, I forgot. I, if the way I understand it, the city is actually the city lift station up here by Jeff Shot is the only one that drains into that. And we just worked on it, Jeff and I, Jeff Shot and I just worked on it. I think it was Saturday. And what it is. I think the last time we had to put a pump in. The city paid for the pump, but Jeff and I did the work. And this time the float had failed. The float that turns it on. So, I don't know who to build that float to. But worse yet, the outlet pipe, and I have no idea. He's had trouble with that every winter, it freezes up. And about six feet away from that. That pipe is only about a foot below the surface. So what he's doing right now, is he's pumping it on top of the ground. I don't know, I talked to Bill and Bill says, you know, that's, should we get the engineers involved? Because I think it heads northeasterly. And when it drops down, I don't know. But there used to be an old house right north of, um. Dwight Waste. And my suspicion is. When they put in this lift station. They just dug over and capped on to the old sewer line. That was for that house with a basement in it. I, I would volunteer to just at least dig back, cause it's froze down and the pipe was broke eventually, cause when we tried it. The other Saturday. About six feet away, all of a sudden here comes the water comes shooting out of the ground. And we had dug a little bit of a hole to try to figure it out. So I don't know when it gets deeper, I don't have any idea. It wasn't, in my opinion, was never put in right in the first place.
We do pay the electricity on that though.
Yep. That's. So I don't know, do we wanna get the engineers involved? It's just a regular sewage pump. It's not a fancy setup like the Hunter plant's got or. And I don't know if there's a need for that. But if we could get that pipe, so the outlet is down below the frost line. So it works all year.
Seven more feet down though, isn't it? But it's only a foot down now?
Yeah, it's about six feet away, that pipe is only about a foot below the surface. And when it's, when or if it heads down, I don't know.
How far is the sewage pump down?
The sewage pump is down. I think that pipe had a coupling in it, so it's, that's about ten feet deep.
Oh gosh, why is that going so? That's weird.
They didn't follow the hill, they just went straight, obviously, right?
Yeah, I know, the pipe comes up and then there's, it's just connected with a, um. Oh, what do you call them? Anyway, with a rubber coupling. And then there's an elbow and it heads out through the side. My thought was if it gets deep, further back, you know, say ten feet or so. Then a guy could just drill a hole in the side of that culvert and do like most of them do, it comes up and goes right back down and out.
Okay.
You know, usually those that.
Is that something to check on when D walls are here, like having?
That or I, Bill and I talked, unless the guy would just go down there with the backhoe once and dig out that.
I suppose he's got a backhoe, hasn't he, Jeff?
That or I could dig it with the, uh, ditch which. And if it's out of my league, then, you know, get out once and see, but. Cause Jeff thought there was a forty-five out there someplace, would it headed downhill? But it's freezing prior to that, evidently. And I think actually, you know, Lady Rimboll lived there, he built that house. I think they had their own septic system. And, just not, I guess not that many years prior to Jeff buying it. Is when. For some reason, they had an open drain on the septic system. And they got rid of that and come over and put this lift station in. I think Trevy Wees supposedly was the mayor at that time.
I say we just dig it up and see what we got before we get engineers involved, it's gonna end up costing a ton of money.
Yeah.
If it's something simple.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Yeah, if they're willing to go do it, yeah.
Who's paying the bill that you were discussing? Who's paying the bill for the pump you were discussing?
I didn't look with the float.
Her float?
I'd say they're maybe about ten bucks.
City?
I'll probably just, I'll just build the float to, the city I think should really cover it, I mean.
True, cause it's outlet station.
Yeah.
Makes sense, yeah.
But I wasn't gonna charge you any labor, I mean, I just. And then I could try digging if the ground's open though. Try digging back once to see what really is going on with that discharge. And I think if that, if we could get that deep enough. That system would work just fine. There it is.
Nice.
Well, just let us know on that day one, thanks for doing that. Um, last thing is we got a letter addressed to the city council to read. Anonymously, I guess. So I will read that. To Gackle City Council. We do not take pleasure in our complaints, but like to get this addressed. Visiting with other residents, we have some of the same complaints. We feel our maintenance department should remember who pays their salary. It is we, the people of Gackle. First off, we have a problem with the mess left behind from the ice storm. We are told. We must have our branches cut a certain size for them to pick them up. It was still winter outside, which made very hard to get done. As our talks progressed, things came up. Why do we have to cut them when the city owns a dump truck that they can use to put all size branches in with a tractor? This would make less trips to the dump and helping your fellow citizens during an unforeseen event. The hard pill to swallow was our maintenance crew was seen during city business hours. And equipment cleaning the tree mess at their family members' house. Not the mess on the side of the road like the rest of us, but in their yard. From the looks of it, the tree was even cut into piece by them. If they are going to take our money to do that, then they should have to do all the yards in town. It's only fair to treat everyone the same. The next big complaint to Snore Roll. It is the same problem if your family or friends, you don't, I'm sorry, it's the same problem. If your family or friends. You do not get your driveway snowed in and you may even get your driveway cleared. We watch this happen each snowstorm and it's very unfair to everyone else. We get, they should use city machines and gas to do their own, that is just a perk of the job. The problem is doing others that they want to. We hate to write this. But these problems are frustrating to see it happen. Something needs to be done, not just a talking to, you need to come up with a solution that is fair to everyone. We will be following this on video recording to see what this solution will be. Thank you for all you do for our town.
They didn't sign it, did they? No name?
No, it's anonymous.
Uh, I'd like to say something about that. First of all, it wasn't a debate, you're talking about Bill. Bill was at Katie and Robbie's house. On a Friday afternoon, after we were done with our week's work, with his own pickup truck, his own chainsaw, his own gasoline. Cutting up the tree that came down in their yard. He did use the tractor, cause the branch, there was a big branch stuck hanging in the tree, it was swinging against the house in the wind. And he used the tractor to knock that out of the tree. Um, other than that. On his own time, not being paid, his chainsaw, his pickup truck, his gas. As far as cleaning anybody's driveway, we haven't cleaned a person's driveway in years. So whoever wrote that, I mean, if they have a grievance, they should come here and, and, uh, because it's basically hearsay, you know.
Where, is it for sure, you said Bill cut a tree for Katie or?
Katie and Robbie, yeah, they're.
Is that sure what they're referencing to?
Uh, that's the only thing we could think of. Other than that, we, we're not in anybody's private, you know, relatives cutting up branches or trees, other than. Then Bill went and cut that branch up at Katie and Robbie's. And that was, like I said, his work week was done, he had his forty hours in, it was Friday afternoon, his own truck, his own chainsaw, his own gas. His own time.
You don't have a problem, why in the hell do they send a letter like that? They don't sign it.
They don't know.
So we don't even have no, who we contact to get more information. Uh, there's no proof of the accusations they're making. We don't know. And now we're supposed to correct it, I mean. I, I just don't understand it. And I, I don't put any merit on that letter. Cause if they're not willing to sign, first, but they could have came here and voiced their complaint. The other thing is, there's two positions that are open on the council. One of them circulated his petition, or one resident did, and their name is on the ballot. Well, they missed the deadline, but if they're dissatisfied the way this council is functioning. Then they can still go out and campaign and be a write-in. If they're not willing to sit on this council, then as far as I'm concerned, they're not willing to come here and voice a complaint with some proof. Then I think it's just a waste of time even reading the letter.
Well, that's just, they, they're assuming all of these things, instead of, if they saw Bill over there doing that, they, they could have walked over and said, hey, uh. Uh, you want city time right now? Is that the city's chainsaw? Is that the city's gasoline? Obviously, they did.
As far as the dump truck and, and gave them big branches, hit it out of that dump truck, the city owns a dump truck, but it's a dirt truck. The tailgate on it opens from the bottom out.
Well, we take the, take the tailgate.
Well, if you can, that's good, but for the most part. We use it for leaves and stuff like that, well, you're not gonna take the bottom back.
Well, like I said earlier.
But the reason.
Bill and I already discussed, using the dump truck, once we get a, a time set for people to get branches out. We're not, like I said, it takes twenty minutes, half hour to, for that air brakes on that thing to, to air up. Um, it has no heat in it. Um, and we're not gonna go through all of that with that dump truck to go pick up two piles over there and one pile over there, you know.
Then the other thing was, the dump, the ice storm was in December. The truck was in winter storage, it does not have a block here, I don't know.
It would never.
And those doors down there were so iced up, the water ran against and froze them down, we'd had to chisel them out. How in the hell are we supposed to get that truck out of there?
No.
I mean, it's not a usual circumstance.
That's what I think too, you know, at that time of year.
And the thing with them complaining about having to cut them into certain sized piles. You know, there's a couple of people that done it, put these massive piles up from that wall to that wall, and they're all entangled like this. You try and pick up part of that, and all you're doing is dragging half of that pile out in the street, they're falling all over the place. You got big branches hanging, you can't get them, if you were gonna be loading them in the truck, you can't get them over the side, cause the branches are hanging. They need to be in manageable piles, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, we can't, and if, if we're just using the tractor, can't go down the street with a twenty-five foot. Branch hanging on the ends of the, the bucket, you know. I mean, we're, we've been working our butts off trying to get all these branches and stuff cleaned up, and I, I don't understand that right there. Other than, you know, that's the only thing Bill and I could think of, when he went over and cut up Katie and Robbie's on his own time with his own stuff.
By all rights, is the city obligated to clean up branches? Like, are we going out of our way to provide a service for that?
Absolutely.
Those aren't, those trees aren't city property, they're all private property, and we are going out of our way to clean them up when people. Go out of their way to put them on the curb.
Exactly.
That's not.
And we're not charging anybody anything extra or anything, anywhere else you go, anywhere I've ever lived.
Cause if anybody's got any heartburn over it and they don't like what's happening, we can stop.
That's what Bill said, he goes, you know what, forget, we're not doing the branches, they can take care of them themselves, you know.
I mean, if.
It's sad, but that's where it's going.
Yeah. Yeah, which I don't think that's, you know, basically written down hearsay is enough to go down that.
No.
But if it becomes too much of a headache, we can stop providing that, you know.
We actually literally asked us to come into their yard with the tractor and one person had a, a branch that had come down out of a tree, was half on the ground and half over the top of their garage, and wanted to be the one with the tractor to remove it, and I, I said, I can't do that.
Absolutely.
I'm not.
Take the liability of that.
Risk, you know, put a hole in the roof of your garage, crap, get a tractor. If they're cutting it stuff up and putting it out to the curb, we're getting it and hauling it away.
I think that's a nice service that we provide.
It is, it's a very nice service that, anywhere else you'd be paying for that, so.
What's your opinion, Larry?
Well, we're not in business for going on private property and cleaning it up, we're just not. It's an unfortunate thing that we had an ice storm in December, but take it up with Mother Nature, I mean, we're just doing the best we can. And I'm with, that's just a blank, basically, to me, a blank piece of paper, a lot of signatures on it, and so.
Yeah, as far as to address, something needs to be done, not just a talking to, you need to come up with a solution. We will be following this on video recording to see what that solution will be. I have absolutely no interest in taking part in some sort of disciplinary action
Yeah.
over written down hearsay.
I agree a hundred percent.
That's my stance on it, and that's my address to it, I guess, officially.
I'm moving, do you want, or put it on the file and leave it? And move on to the meeting.
Give you guys a chance to look at Bill's. For the month of March. You get one?
Yeah.
Any questions on anything there, guys, or something?
I don't.
If not, take a motion to approve Bill's.
Don't make that motion.
Jeff second?
I'll second.
Larry, all in favor?
Bye.
Uh, May sixth?
Works for me.
That's something?
No. Math, that's kinda weird.
Oh.
Yeah, it's backwards, you got this S's on the end.
I should have asked too, before we adjourn, what are we gonna do as of May twentieth then? We'll just address it at the next, next meeting, who doesn't? Who still has a mess that we're probably gonna mow again? Cause I think a lot of people are gonna take advantage of getting the branches cleaned up, but just, so May twentieth is the day they'll clean up the branches, and then we'll address anything further after that at the next meeting.
Well, don't wait for that, if they got them out.
Or no, this, I'm sorry, that'd be June then already, shit, that's getting pretty late. Well, that's all we can do, I guess, June meeting, we'll have to address the rest then?
Yeah.
By then, it could have eight inches of grass in there, I can't, I don't know. I don't know. Or there were battling more, I don't know.
Well, we could, uh, if it starts looking like it's gonna get real tall and we're gonna lose some of the branches in it, we could go around, put markers on them, flags, so we know where they're at, when we do have to go in and cut.
That's a good idea.
Then I'll lose help before we pull soon.
Okay. Sounds like there's only a few we need to address, so maybe, I don't even think we need to.
Yeah, like I said, there's only two places in the town where we have to cut a resident's ground.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn, you guys?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Oh, I didn't, May sixth does work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I didn't hear anybody saying anything, so, okay, May sixth, come here.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming.